Good evening and welcome to the November 2, 2020 Planning Commission Meeting of Menlo Park. We start with our roll call. We have six of our seven commission members here. And I'll call names and if you'll just indicate with a wave or a present, Mr. Barnes.
Here, thank you. Good evening.
And Commissioner DeCarty. And Commissioner Doran.
I'm here.
And Commissioner Cale.
Present.
Commissioner Kennedy, I believe, is recused for the first item and will perhaps come in later. And Ms. Tate.
Here.
All right, and I'm Henry Riggs, your chair this evening. We start with reports and announcements. I'll introduce Corinna Sandomeyer, our staff liaison.
Yes, good evening Chair Riggs and Commissioners. We, staff has a correction to the minutes that I will announce when we get to the consent calendar. This won't require the minutes to be pulled unless any of the Commissioners would like to discuss the minutes. That concludes my reports and announcements, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions tonight regarding our agenda? All right, we'll move forward to the public comment period. For those who are attending via GoToWebinar, you can participate in the meeting by clicking on the hand that is on the control panel. The control panel is on the right. I believe the hand is on the left upper edge of the panel. And if you would click on that, then staff will know that you would like to speak. This public comment period is for items that are not on the agenda. In other words, not 836 Harvard Avenue and not ADUs. So if anyone in the public has anything to comment on to the Planning Commission, this would be the time.
Evening Chair Riggs and fellow commission members and members of the public. At this time, Chair Riggs, I am not seeing any virtual hands or questions being submitted, but we can give it a second or two if you would like.
Certainly, let's give it a few seconds for those who might need to find and operate this icon. All right, seeing no prompts, I will close the public comment period and we'll move to our consent calendar. The item on our consent calendar tonight is approval of minutes from the October 5 Planning Commission meeting. Do I have a motion or comments on the minutes from October 5?
Yes, so through the chair, staff has an update. So on page 18 of the minutes, the eighth line of Peter Edmunds' comments, there is a typo. It says, "For heritage tree number one," that is removal, and that should be corrected to "for heritage tree number one," that it's removal.
Makes sense. All right, thank you. Any other corrections or a motion to approve? Mr. Doran.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, and do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Commissioner Cale. We'll move ahead with a vote. All in favor of approval of the consent calendar. It's, since you're all on screen, let's just raise our hands. And that is five Commissioners and then anyone opposed and anyone abstaining. And I have one abstention from Commissioner Tate. So the motion passes, sorry, yeah, 501. All right, we move from here to our public hearing. We have tonight 836 Harvard Avenue. This is a request for a use permit to demolish an existing one-story, single-family residence and construct a two-story, single-family residence with an attached garage and basement on a substandard lot with regard to width. This is in the R1U, Single Family Urban Residential Zoning District. Mr. Pruder, do you have any update or comments on our project tonight?
Good evening, Matt.
Good evening. Good evening Chair Riggs and fellow Commissioners. There are no announcements or items to report at the moment, but I am here for any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, and I believe we have an applicant to present tonight. Would that be Mr. Sable?
Yes, hi, this is Joe Sable, the project designer from Arrow 11 Design. Thank you so much for your time and I welcome all your comments, fellow commission members. I just wanted to start out with a brief overview of kind of the high-level design goals that we had for the project and leave the rest of my time to help answer any questions or fill in any blanks on questions that you might have. I think to start out, one of our main goals was to try to maintain as much of the green space and yard space as possible for the project. Working with a more narrow lot, we wanted to kind of make sure we were cognizant of all the other neighbors' position of their homes. And that led us to our kind of extrusion of our mass that we have, where we have the main body of the house is toward the front. We have a kind of a small slender neck of massing, and then we moved to the rear where we have kind of the main great room space, kitchen area in the rear. So we were, we wanted to kind of create as much open space and light and air to get into the center of the mass. So that led us to our overall kind of shape and the dumbbell form that we have presenting for you guys today. And I think that was kind of the main drive that generated the form and the position of the building, and we wanted to be sensitive to the left and right neighbors as we were designing the form and also cognizant of the kind of the proposed second floor balcony in the rear. We wanted to try and put that almost in the center of the space and with a lot of distance left and right and a lot of distance from the rear as well. But overall, we were very excited with the form that we have today and trying to get as much light and air and kind of the centering of the masses in the overall property. And overall, we ended up kind of, from the original position of the building that's proposed to be demolished, we kind of, the left side and the right side set in from the original position and the proposed house sets in and toward the back of the existing garage space as the building, the one-story building on it, as proposed now. So overall, we have some mitigation measures in for our neck space where we have a circulation space of the hallways on the main and second level. We've introduced some box trees on the left and in the rear to mitigate the second-story balcony space and on the interior neck space as well on the left-hand side. Overall, we've tried to maintain traditional massing for the roof forms and try to integrate with some of the characteristics that we found in the neighborhood as we initiated the design. Again, overall, we're super thrilled with what we've come up with so far and we look forward to your comments and your ideas moving forward. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. So let me start with Commissioner questions on the project before we move to public comment. Does anyone have a question regarding this project for the applicant? Mr. Cale.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Looking at, I think it was one of the neighbors' comments, they asked about why is the building more or less in two parts? And I think you've explained that. But they also wondered if it was set up to be a rental, because I, by my count, I get seven bedrooms and as many as seven bathrooms. Is this designed as a single-family house? Or is this set up to be a rental property?
This is set up to be a single-family residence, yes.
Okay. I noticed some input about the air conditioning units. And I understand why you have them where they are. I just wonder why you need three air conditioning units, three condensers?
I think if you don't mind, I'd like to bring in Philip Kamigar in the conversation. I think he could answer that more properly than I could. Philip, do you have any comments on the three?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners and staff. It's great to be here. Thank you for allowing us to be involved in this process. And in response to your question, I believe your question started with the house being used as a rental. You know, our intention and the design of the house is 100% a single-family resident. And I believe that if you look at the overall floor plan, you will notice that the house and the portion of the house in the rear or in the front, they are definitely dependent on each other. One without the other could not complete a full home. Whereas the kitchen and the great room is in the back. And of course, in the front, we have our, you know, main closet, guest bathroom, living room, and a full en suite. As to the air conditioners, we provide three different systems for the house. So every floor has its own thermostat and has its own system to control its heating and cooling. One is for the efficiency of the units. And also, at the same time as the other, one is the convenience of the homeowner where they can control heating and cooling without having to heat unwanted space. If they're not using the basement, they could shut the system off in the basement. If they want to heat up the first floor, the second floor, they can do so independently. We believe that to be a convenient and an energy-saving measure. And also, of course, you know, it relates to an extra cost, but that balances out the convenience and also the fact that the homeowner does have, you know, the capability of being able to heat and cool the house without wasting energy and wasting a lot of resources on heating a portion which is not required to be heated at that particular time.
Are these typical forced air units or these mini splits?
They are forced air units. And I believe, of course, you're the, the new energy codes are dictating what type of units they will be, but they are forced air units, yes.
Okay. I guess my only suggestion would be you may not need air conditioning in the basement. And you could also argue you may not need air conditioning on the first floor. Just, but it's personal preference, it's up to you. You may not ever need the air conditioning, at least in the basement. I wonder if the two, I wonder if you could move two of those condensers to the left of the fireplace, just for noise? As the neighbor did ask about the noise and trying to mitigate that.
We would be, we would be happy to move them to that side. It's absolutely, it's absolutely possible and doable. We would have no problem doing that. Also, we want to, we want to bring up that, looking at the plans, once we move those, those units will be approximately 16 to 18 feet from property line and an additional five or six feet to the living space of the next-door neighbor. But we will be happy to move them to the location that you suggested, sir.
Yeah, I think that gains another, excuse me, that gains another two feet of distance from the left-side neighbor, for sure. Moving it against the main wall of the house, for sure.
Yeah, that would help. My next question I wanted to ask about the two heritage trees being removed. They don't look like they're in the buildable area, but are they being removed because of the condition they're in?
So the front tree, the the Deodora cedar tree, that is in the driveway of the property. And also, the back, the back-left one, again, it's the condition, as well as complying with the left-side neighbor's request that her daughter is highly allergic to that particular tree. And both trees have had, have had, you know, quite a bit of dropped limbs in the past that the neighbor had asked us to also mitigate and address. And we are, of course, proposing 48-inch box trees and replacement of what we are removing.
Okay. I want to ask about the materials. The windows themselves, maybe it's in here, but what, what is the material for the windows and for the trim?
So the windows themselves, you know, we are using an aluminum-clad product, whereas aluminum and the color of the units are, you know, baked into the unit. And we have wood on the interior, paint grade wood. And the trim will be in stucco. We have a stucco trim to match the rest of the house, which will be very, very an easy touch, something not to, not to pop out, so to speak, to keep with the conservative and the clean look of that we are trying to achieve.
And there's, are there any, is there an accent material proposed? I see a lot of stucco, especially on the, on all the elevations.
No, we are not proposing any additional materials. We believe that, you know, by using, by having, you know, we have quite a bit of windows in the property and those windows are dark bronze, black color, and also with the accent of the garage door. Also with a, with us, and I'm looking at the elevations at the moment, with the overhang trellis over the guest bedroom window on the right side of the property, looking at the front. I believe we are, we are providing quite a bit of different color and also materials in metal to match that stucco as well.
I would just,
Go ahead, Joe, please, go ahead.
I would just, I would just add to what Philip was saying, that I think the goal was to kind of focus on the window openings and have that, the, from the main elevation in the front, the articulation of the metal roof and the differentiation of the color of the metal roof against the stucco to kind of create a harmony between the metal roof and the window trim colors to create some kind of balance and harmony as your eye moves across the front facade.
Okay, and my last question is about the second-floor deck. I realize it's fairly far from the neighbor, 20, over 20 feet. But it's also, the floor is about 12 and a half feet from the ground, and I'm concerned about privacy into the neighbor's house because that deck aligns up with the back notch of their house on the left side. I know there'd be a tree planted there, but of course, trees can die. And what I'm going to ask is, would you consider a solid wall on the left side rather than an open railing to help with the privacy on the left side?
And of course, you know, we, one of the trees that we are planting, and I believe it's a, it's a 48-inch box tree. One, and again, pardon me for asking the question, but your concern is about the left side exposure, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the tree that we are planting, of course, is a mature 48-inch tree, 48-inch box tree that would, its canopy will probably be at the height of that area. If you feel it necessary that for privacy reasons you would like us to add that solid wall, I don't think, you know, we should have a problem with that. And of course, Joe, Joe can, you know, chime in on this as well.
Sure, I just want to clarify, you're talking about basically kind of a solid half-wall and some material on the left side?
Correct, yes.
Three and a, three and a half feet high off the deck there.
Yes.
Yeah. I wanted to just add to the conversation for a second. Philip, you know more about the trees than I do. When you talk about the canopy of the 48-inch, 48-inch box tree, what is the typical height of a box tree at that height? What does that usually, what does that translate to in the site out there, do you think?
You know, it would be hard to assess, of course, at the time that we purchased the trees. We try to find the most mature tree that's placed in that box. But my previous experience has been that the tree canopy starts close to 12 feet off the root of the root of the tree. So, you know, it's 12 feet of stock plus the actual, you know, the actual tree form above it. That's my estimation of that, of that. But of course, it will depend on the, on the nursery and the actual tree that we purchased for that.
Thank you for that.
I'll just say that that is my personal preference. I'm curious if other Commissioners support that. I'm looking at the site plan and that tree will help somewhat, but there's also some view into the neighbor's yard. And just because your second floor is fairly high with a 10-foot ceiling below, I'm just concerned about privacy. And I think a solid half-wall would be, go a long way to helping mitigate some privacy. So Chair Riggs, I have some comments later with the, that the applicant may wish to address, but those are all the questions I have.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have questions before we go to public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and see if there's public comment on the project. So I can say to those who are connected via GoToWebinar, on the right side where you have your control panel, there should be a hand icon on the left edge of that control panel. And if you click on that, it will indicate to staff that you would like to speak on this subject. You can also use the chat box in the lower half of the control panel to, where it says type a message here and indicate a comment and your name. Although I'm afraid we have limited time for you to do that and would prefer that you click on the hand icon. So Mr. Tapia, do we have anyone interested in speaking?
Good evening Chair Riggs, members of the Commission and members of the public. At this time, I am showing a virtual hand raised. So with your permission, I would like to introduce the first commenter.
Yes, please.
Okay, so Lisa Shumway, your microphone, you should be able to activate your microphone.
Okay, great. So it shows that I'm unmuted.
You're live now.
Okay, great. So my name is Lisa Shumway. I live adjacent to the proposed 836 Harvard Development. I live in a four-bedroom, three-bath home. The property on the other side of the development is a three-bedroom, two-bath home. The proposed development has seven bedrooms and five bathrooms. How is that in scale with the neighborhood that is largely single-story? Number two. The Menlo Park Police and Fire Department are aware the developer poisoned the heritage trees, specifically the Ginkgo and Deodora, with a gasoline-type solution. There is no mention of how the developer will clean up the toxic dump he has created as a result of him poisoning the 836 property. I'm a breast cancer survivor. The smell of the gasoline-type solution that he poured on the base of the suite of the trees and then spilled on the surface of the Harvard street was noticeable for days. I want to make sure that that is mitigated. Number three. The property, as you mentioned, has a balcony at the end, which seems incredibly egregious for a development that goes so far in the back of a property that will impinge on our privacy. I have a 24-year-old autistic son who, when activated, can express himself very loudly and often with expletives. Why anyone would ever want to live so close to us, to the point where they could observe his meltdown? And our way of life is beyond me. So I would think that he would want to distance himself from us as much as possible. Lastly, this this fence that he suggests that he's put, which is just a narrow bit of fence at substandard, barely reflects the deteriorating condition of the full line of that fence along our property line. I would suggest that the developer must replace that fence after he's disposed of the two poisoned heritage trees prior to him developing the property. Also, for the safety of the people who would be developing the property, they should not be working on a fence when there's a big ditch. I don't think that either the developer or really the Planning Commission has much credibility with our neighborhood. We have a development across the street from 836 Harvard that has been in the works for three years that has impacted the property values of the people on either side. And I don't want this property on 836 Harvard to be impacting my property value for as long a period of time. I don't know why you guys go ahead and approve these developments and don't have a time limitation so that you're not just, and they're not just poisoning their own properties, but they're poisoning the property values of the people around them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ms. Shumway. Definitely issues for us to consider. Mr. Tapia, do we have any other hands raised?
At this moment, Chair Riggs, I am not seeing any further comments or questions typed in.
All right. As we have obviously been live for at least three minutes, I'd like to close public comment and bring it back to the DS, the virtual DS for any questions, comments, or follow-up on the issues just raised by Ms. Shumway.
Good, Chair.
Mr. Doran.
I would like to inquire of our city staff about one allegation from the last speaker that the Fire Department, the Police Department were aware of the poisoning of the tree. Do we have any record of that in the, in the application? And would there normally be such a record in the planning or the permit application? Do we have someone from city staff who's presenting this tonight?
Sorry, staff, it's here, if I may. Thank you for your question, Vice Chair Doran. And yes, I'm the staff responsible for the project. And we had worked through this with the city arborist. It was reported and the city arborist worked with the applicant team to resolve the issue. And my understanding, it is a case that the applicant was required to pay a fine through the arbor, sorry, the heritage tree removal permit process. They were issued permits and then there was a subsequent appeal period wherein no appeal was granted. The appeal could have taken this particular issue to the EQC and their attention before it came to this meeting. And after that 15-day appeal period had ended, no appeals were filed. And so we proceeded with the understanding that the removals were essentially approved pending Planning Commission determination at this meeting tonight. And so the situation was resolved between the city arborist and the applicant team accordingly when the reporting of that incident had been filed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pruder, a little follow-up. Was there any discussion about abating the soil contamination with gasoline, which would be potentially a separate issue from the city arborist?
I do not understand of that being the case. I'm not aware of any discussion that came up regarding soil treatment or remediation or conditions of the soil.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions of staff? Or follow up regarding what we've heard? Mr. Kale.
I don't have any. I have some comments in general, but I don't have any follow up to the previous comments.
Well, if you'll let me take a moment, I'll follow up regarding the fence. So, Mr. Pruder, we have a significantly deteriorated fence. Fences typically are shared responsibility, but are you aware of the situation with the fence?
Thank you for your question. Yes, I am aware of the situation. I had spoken prior to publication of the staff report, I spoke with the commenter, Ms. Shumway, and I also spoke with the applicant regarding the matter and there has been an understanding of both sides in terms of the literal sides of it and also the the particular questions that both sides have raised regarding this fence matter. And I'm aware of the concerns that were expressed.
So it's your understanding that this is resolved between the developer and the neighbor?
My understanding is that the situation may not be completely resolved, but I am aware from the applicant team. The applicant has indicated that they are willing to work on improving the fence and potentially speeding up the process of repair and restoration of the fencing and replacement of fencing at a quicker moment.
May I add, may I add something in this regard?
Yes, please.
So we have absolutely no problem with replacing that entire length of fence which runs on the left side of the property as well as the rear of the property. We are just, of course, asked for our demolition permits to be issued so we can actually take care of this. Before we will dig our basement, we will have no problem with replacing that length of fence. Just as an addition, we did replace a large portion on the right side as a courtesy to our neighbors where it was possible to do so. On the left side of the property, we do have a shrubbery area which is on our property. It's our intention to save that the shrub. The left side neighbor has also shown her interest to save that shrub. And so, you know, we need just a little bit more time, basically just time to be able to hand demolish the section of fence that's it's an old brick fence behind that shrubbery. So we do need to hand demolish that, of course, not being able to get a machinery back there. So we wanted to be able to take care of that so we can replace that entire left side left side run, which is close to hundred and forty feet. But we would have no problem doing that as a courtesy. It was never in question and you know, the the section of the fence that was at the time that was brought up to our attention, we did, you know, replace a good thirty feet of that fence as a temporary measure. And we are, of course, be very, very happy to replace the remainder of the fence. We would never let it stay in that condition. I just wanted to add that to make sure that, you know, the panel is aware of this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that would be Mr. Joe Sable speaking. All right, so commissioners, comments starting.
If I may through the chair.
Yes.
All right, just a point of clarification, Chair Riggs, that was actually the property owner, Mr. Philip Kamangar, not Joe Sable.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pruder. All right, Mr. Kale.
Thank you. So just some general comments. I think in general, the project is approvable in general. I have some concerns. On the positive side, I think the overall massing is works well, especially from the street elevation. And I appreciate that the on the second floor deck, the applicants are willing to put in a half wall for some privacy. For the concerns, it's noted as a as a modern transitional hybrid. And I see the the massing and the roof forms are are traditional. And then the stuck, the materials, excuse me, are actually very modern. And I'm just not sure if they if they work as well together as they could. With it's I'm looking at a lot of stucco and the 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 answer is that about the trim is going to be stucco too is a little concerning to me. In my mind, when the trim is stucco, that's usually a two by four nailed around the window and covered with stucco. Or other times, it's a prefabricated foam piece that's covered with stucco. So I I'm just concerned that there's a lot of stucco. It's a maybe a severe kind of modern approach to the materials, but working with a traditional form. So I'm I'd love to see an accent material or something to help warm this up and not make it so so perhaps stark. My other concern is, and this is just a suggestion, that the that the applicant kind of reconsider the roof forms. And what cut my eye is when you look at the side elevations, the the second floor roof has this slope to it and it seems like from the front and the rear, it has these gable roof forms. And from the side, it has these hips and it I just wonder if you're driving down the street, you're going to see this and it's going to not come across as well as as you might think. And if if there is an opportunity to revisit the roof forms, I noticed that there's some a lot of offsets on the second floor especially. And maybe the the roof form should reflect that in some way. So we don't have these large sockets, but those are more comments than anything else. And I would say that the project is approvable as is, and with the only condition to add from my point of view, to add that solid half wall at the second floor deck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kale. Any other comments on the architecture planning? All right, seeing none. I will I will echo Mr. Kale's concern about the condensers. And I'm glad to hear the willingness of the developer to to relocate those and the same for the fencing. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the use permit for the staff report with two conditions. One, the relocation of the condensers closer to the interior of the, I'll call it a court. And secondly, to replace the hundred and forty feet of fence as indicated by the developer prior to the excavation of the basement. And with that, I guess I'll call for a second.
Commissioner Riggs, I'd like to second, but can we add a condition for a solid wall of the second floor deck?
I'm sorry, I I meant to do that and I don't know why I didn't put that arrow in. Yes, please, with a solid wall on the side of the second floor deck.
I'll second the motion.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on the project before we vote? All right, I'll call for a vote and I will call by name alphabetically, Mr. Barnes. A thumbs up. And Mr. DeCarty.
Yes.
And Mr. Doran.
I mean, yes.
And Mr. Kale.
Yes.
And Ms. Tate.
Yes.
Thank you. And I am also a yes. So we have six in favor. No other commissioners present, one one commissioner absent. The project is approved and congratulations.
Thank you, Commission. We really appreciate your attention.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate all your comments and feedback. Thanks again.
All right, that concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. Under regular business, we have a subcommittee report regarding accessory dwelling units. Mr. Doran, would this be your baby?
Yeah, so I will kick it off. I think I will be looking to my fellow subcommittee members for some input here along the way. So this is, of course, a work in progress. But we have made some progress since our last conversation. A few things that we would like to propose for the commission. The first, there was a presentation by Ori Paz to the Housing Commission that Commissioner Tate and I saw when it was presented to the Housing Commission, we would like to invite Mr. Paz to present it to the Planning Commission. We think it's very informative and will help us as we consider ADU issues going forward. So I'll just run through my bullets and then maybe we can discuss afterwards. And, you know, see if there's support for that on the committee, on the commission. The next issue that we discussed was the legalization of nonconforming units. As we previously discussed in the Planning Commission, state law requires us to legalize existing nonconforming ADUs unless they present health and safety violations. There's a great deal of concern among the owners of these units regarding what is considered a health and safety violation. So some other cities nearby, notably East Palo Alto, have programs in place to help homeowners through that process. And I think this is something that Michelle knows more about than I do. Michelle's spoken to some officials in East Palo Alto. Do you want to tell us what you've learned on that? Sorry, Commissioner Tate.
Excuse me. All right, so East Palo Alto has is working with several organizations. And and part of the financing was from the name just escaped me, but it was the Catalyst Fund.
Rebuilding.
No, the Catalyst Fund, which is funding rebuilding together. What they're doing, so the organizations are rebuilding together, City Systems, EPA, Can Do, and Sue. So what's happening is that rebuilding together is taking a look at units that, excuse me, were not permitted to see whether or not they can, you know, be permitted and within what range so that the homeowners understand what they're facing. And they're also doing some repairs and trying to help that process along. City Systems is really great. I actually have gone to one of the events that East Palo Alto put on where they had all these organizations present. And what happens is that City Systems takes a look at your space, your lot, and tries to figure out your configuration and what kind of size ADU, what really is needed, the setbacks to make it happen for your individual property. So it's not just a blanket. They actually look at each person's backyard to try to see how to make it happen for them. Um, Sue, I think well, I'm not sure whether or not they presented to the planning commission in the past. However, there was a unit in the Willows, which I took a look at years ago now. It's a container and it's in the backyard of one of the founders of Sue and it's actually pretty awesome. Now they're in a position to work in Menlo Park because you know, it's legal now. Before it was almost impossible to make it happen. Because I did look at them myself, I will say, and there was no way to be able to fit one of those in my yard. So now at least there is some flexibility and I believe they are starting to work in in Menlo Park, around the whole of Menlo Park. And EPA Can Do, they have a lot of things going on. They just like Sue have some land trust things going on and trying to help homeowners with either getting their their ADUs legitimized or understanding what really they can do to put ADU in their backyard. I am planning to meet with each of these organizations to get more information of how we can do something similar to what they're doing, a partnership like this in Menlo Park and what it would take. I know that the effort has completely been financed for East Palo Alto to do it. And I'm not sure whether or not we would be able to strike the same types of deals that that they have with minimal expense to the city, but it's definitely something to look into because they have been at this now for a couple of years. So they have a good idea of what what they're doing at this point.
So I'm not sure that we have a recommendation for the commission on that as of yet, but it is something that we're going to continue to to work on. The next topic, which we previously discussed at a high level, is the idea of having preapproved plans for ADUs that have been approved by the Planning Division in advance to make it easier for people to build new units. This is something that is happening in some parts of the state already. And I think it's particularly, well, it's important for two reasons. One is in order to encourage people to actually build these things, I think we need to try to have as much transparency as possible and as try to minimize upfront costs to the extent we can. And this is one way that we can help minimize upfront costs. The other reason I think is important is that the state's mandated that for the nondiscretionary ADUs, the ones that don't come before the Planning Commission, the the Planning Division has only sixty days to approve the building permit. So if they have preapproved some ADU plans, that will make it easier for the Planning Division to to meet that deadline, which is pretty tight, I think, by their normal operating standards. ADUs that are subject to discretionary approvals, the ones that we see in the Planning Commission, there is no state imposed deadline and they have they're subject to the normal deadlines for planning applications. So one, I think, promising avenue to get preapproved plans in place for Menlo Park is a program through HART of San Mateo County, the Housing Endowment and Regional Trust of San Mateo County. Makes a great acronym. I don't think they have an endowment and I don't think they're actually legally organized as a trust, but I'm nitpicking. They are working on these kinds of plans. In fact, they have plans drawn up already that are available. And they have a program in place, I believe it's six cities in San Mateo County to get those plans preapproved in those cities already. I think it's East Palo Alto, I think Daly City, San Mateo are among them. I'm not sure what the other cities are. So I spoke to HART. The plans are drawn and as I say, they are being reviewed in several cities already. They plan to release them to the public by the end of January. They're going to be, they'd originally planned to have them available by the end of October. I think the COVID nineteen situation slowed them down like it has a lot of other people. But they now plan to have them available to the public by the end of January. They're going to be open source plans, so anyone can use them whether we have any formal program in place with Menlo Park or not. But the advantage of getting the preapproval is that we'll have a process for people. So the plans obviously may need some customization for site conditions. And people might have obviously personal taste involved, things like that, but certainly would be a good starting place. So we would like to explore with the Planning Division, inviting HART to meet with them and submit their plans for preapproval, which they can do now. There's there's no cost to Menlo Park to do that. I think that would be very worthwhile program that personally I'd like to pursue and I think there's support on the subcommittee for that. Commissioner Kale has spoken to some people in San Diego County. They have a somewhat similar plan there for open source plans. And maybe you could tell us about that, Mr. Kale.
Yeah, thank you. Didn't know about the HART plans. That's interesting. When we first, the three of us first talked about this, we discussed save as possible to piggyback onto any program that the San Mateo County Planning Department had. It turns out they they do not have a program in place yet for this. I've been put in touch with a long-range planner and so maybe I'll get some more information, but as of now, they've just approved their ADU program as about a month ago. There are three other cities that I that I've noticed that have provided free plans. One is Danville. One is San Jose and one is San Diego County. I put messages out to Danville and San Jose and haven't heard back yet. But I did talk to a planner in San Diego County and he had some interesting feedback. He said that the the first approach that they had to the whole program was to just to provide, just to provide a fee waiver for all the plan check fees and permit fees for anyone in the county to build an ADU. And that was a big hurdle for them. And the the idea for the free ADU plans was almost an afterthought to that. But they did provide that and those plans are available. The way they, and an interesting thing is how do we want to go about that? If if HART has some plans and we can do that, that'd be great. For the county of San Diego, what they did, what they had to decide was, are they going to hire someone to provide these plans? Are they going to do them in-house? And in the end, they had an architect who was on under contract with the county, so he provided some plans. Then they got someone in the engineering department to provide engineered drawings, AutoCAD drawings. So if you're in the county, you can go and download these plans as a PDF or an AutoCAD file and you can customize it to submit for for an ADU permit and then there's no fees for that. It's had a few hiccups. At first, people didn't understand that about the fee waiver, so they had to have some open house programs and some handouts to make that clear. And there was also some criticism from the design community that the plans were not 100% ready to build. And the planner I spoke with, he said that was kind of by design so people could customize it as they wanted to. One of the benefits of these plans is that the Building Department and the Planning Departments both have a template, more or less, that they can approve these in a quick manner, so it can go through pretty quickly. But it's only been a few months since the plans have been available, so let's say August of 2019, so it's been since then that this program has started. I'll add, even though I haven't talked to San Jose online, they do have pre, they do have preapproved plans. And the way that program works is you can, if you want to provide plans, you can apply to the city to be a vendor. There are architects and ADU builders who have done this, so they're preapproved. Then they have plans, you contact the vendors and you get the plans through them. So if we do want to do preapproved plans, there's a couple ways to go about it. Maybe HART is the way to go, maybe through the county is the way to go. So I was just curious, I guess, any input on how we want to do that would be useful. And also, if maybe we want to provide a recommendation or not about a fee waiver for the permits would be a good topic. And lastly, I was just curious about the impact fee. So if you build an ADU, I believe anywhere in the state that's over 750 square feet, they can, the city or jurisdiction can charge impact fees, which are typically school impact fees. Menlo Park has road impact fees, et cetera. If you're under 750 square feet, they cannot charge impact fees. So I guess it's a question I had for our own Building Planning Department is, actually, how much are we talking about? What are these fees and how much do people save by staying under 750 square feet? Is it worth it to go to 800 square feet or more? That's what I have. Vice Chair Doran?
Yeah, so following up on that last point, that is something that I think we, at a minimum, we want to investigate and I think we should try to make the permit structure more transparent for potential builders. I would like, we've talked in our Subcommittee about meeting with the Planning Division. I think as a first step, we should try to schedule that meeting just to get more information. And then maybe we can come back to the commission with a recommendation about whether we want to try to pursue fee waivers. My my reaction is I think it's a great idea, but I think we probably want to lay the groundwork for that a little bit more before we have an actual recommendation on that. So the final topic that we've talked about in our Subcommittee is trying to develop some guidelines for the commission to use on the the permit applications that are not exempt from our review. So we've seen one of those already where there was a unit over a garage in a multifamily neighborhood that exceeded height limits. And I think that it would be useful to have, you know, to think through some of these issues in advance so that when we see them, we can be consistent in our approach to them and we're not seeing it, you know, kind of for the first time. So as I said, I think that this is very much a work in progress. One of the things I think the advantages of having the Subcommittee is that, you know, we have the ability to keep following up on these things and coming back to the commission. So what I would propose for the commission's consideration is that first, we invite Ori Paz to do his presentation, ADUs for the full commission. We, I don't know formally whether we we need resolutions or votes or on any of this, actually, but we do, as a Subcommittee, want to follow up on the preapproved plans and the various possibilities for that, and we want to talk to the Planning Division on that. We want to investigate the fee waivers and in more generally, all the costs associated with building an ADU, the permit fees, impact fees, and tax assessments. So I think it might be useful if we just get a sense of the commission's feelings and all these things. We have support for those. And then I think it'll be up to the three of us to coordinate schedules with the Planning Division to meet with them.
All right, thank you, Michael. Mr. DeCarty?
Yeah, I would just say that I found this presentation very helpful. Really appreciate that the three of you met, that you took exploration of different pieces of this. I think hearing Mr. Paz's presentation makes a lot of sense and I think these multiple areas that you're talking about, learning more and engaging on, feel right in line with the spirit of the changes at the state level and how we as a Planning Commission can best work with those here. So as far as feedback from me, the general feedback is quite positive of the direction you're talking about and the areas you want to learn more about. And thank you to the three of you for taking the time to make it happen.
Any other commission member comments? Off the second, what Mr. DeCarty said. I think this is something beneficial to the town, both property owners and would-be renters. I think it's potentially beneficial to the Planning Division. And I very much support having Mr. Paz make a presentation. So let me ask Ms. Sandomeyer, do you need anything more than a request from the chair with the apparent support of the commission to have Mr. Paz make that presentation in the future?
Yeah, I'll need to coordinate with planning management because of workload and those types of things. Is there, so are you looking to have him come like in the next couple meetings or fairly soon is that?
Well, I think fairly soon would be beneficial. We've got some momentum here, yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll check on that and I can get back to you.
All right, terrific.
Committee, Chairman? Just to clarify, Mr. Paz already has this presentation put together. It's not something he has to create. Just want to add that.
Thank you.
And I believe Mr. Paz would be able to better explain the impact fees because I think there's a couple of slides that talk about fees.
Yeah, that would give us perspective on what the waiver is worth. Yes, exactly. And so I wanted to ask the Subcommittee, in your work regarding legalizing existing nonconforming, and the big question, it is the big question, the elephant in the room, what amounts to health and safety issues? My expectation is this would be an assessment made by the building official. Have you considered having a meeting with a building official in order to try to get some sense of what he would ask for? And how flexible he is to acknowledge the intent of this effort?
We have not. I think we, well, we were going from the angle of trying to evaluate what our neighbor was doing since they have already been at this for a while.
Yeah. It makes sense to me, talking to the Building Department. I think we should get their input into the process, definitely. I think the thrust of what we've been looking at so far is trying to involve kind of a neutral third party in the process, early on in the process. So people that are looking to do this get an idea of, you know, what's going to be involved before they get involved in the formal process.
I'm not sure I followed.
I'm sorry, I might be speaking out of turn here. But one of the big issues, excuse me, Chair Riggs, is that people don't want to come forward to try to make their units legal because they are, they, one, are afraid they won't be able to afford whatever the upgrades are needed to make it legal, up to code. And if they call someone for this, from the city to come and take a look, it can get shut down. So Vice Chair Doran was very conscientious about this and making sure that we find a third party or at least see how the program's running in East Palo Alto where they are using a third party to try to mitigate some bringing the city in into the mix. It's, it helps the homeowner to feel a little like there's a buffer in between and not that they're going to be shut down just right away so that they can, they understand what they're dealing with.
I understand. I think what I was driving at was that ultimately it all revolves around what the building official, what assessment he makes and what what attitude, if you will, he takes toward the whole concept. I do have a project that is currently being reviewed for conformance under similar circumstances. It was converted from a shed to a residence, but there is no record of it. And since there was a code violation reported, it is in front of the building official. And I may be able to work with him to outline what he thinks are priorities and what are not. And if either of the three members would like to join me, I've been trying to put a meeting together with with him and Deanna Chow for three to four weeks now and they are taking alternate vacations and generally aspiring to avoid me, but I think this is the time and this is the week, so. I could follow up with whoever's interested, when and if I get this meeting with the building official so that we would not have any applicant involved other than the one that unfortunately for him is already exposed. Mr. Cale?
Sign me up.
Oh, all right. Great.
And you know, I just have to say that I hope I hope that the building official and and Planning Division are really open and receptive to to what's going on around us because if, because if they shut it down, that's, that's the end of it for us. Meeting Menlo Park and trying to get conforming units.
That is my concern, that we could do a lot of work and have a roadblock based on terms like liability. All right. So I'll put that on my to-do list.
I'm sorry, so I don't think that I was really clear in what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that I hope that we as a city are not going to be so stringent that we don't allow something like this to move forward and it is a state law. That that we're going to be so rigid that it's going to be just, just within the confines and no, no gray areas and no way to to step out of color outside the lines at all because that, that would really be unfortunate. And and hopefully we don't get there. I'll just put it like that.
Oh, I fully agree. And I see that as the big point.
Right. And I'm not saying it just for you. I'm saying it to be on record.
Yeah, very good. Perfect. All right, do we have any other comments on the ADU Subcommittee report? Wonderful progress so far. And promising. So over to informational items and Ms. Sandomeyer.
So the next Planning Commission meeting is in two weeks, November 16th. We have three single-family homes on that agenda and then one architectural control. And that is it for my reports. Thank you.
We have a little more work next week, I mean, next meeting, okay. All right, unless there are any final comments from my fellow commissioners, I will adjourn the meeting. All right, the meeting is adjourned at 8:09 PM. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Chair Riggs. Thank you, staff.